Who's that?
I don't know.
That red, uh, wrap on.
Yeah, there's no way to close that.
Boy, that, that, that'll hit you right in the dome right there.
Wait, it's like a laser beam.
Bring my sub last.
I get a hold of him, but I'll write.
Alright, you guys ready? Call to order. Making a meeting with board trustees for the San Andres River Water Conservation District, Improvement District Number One for January twenty eighth. And I have a roll call fix.
Yes. Trustee Carolyn Bacardi.
Here.
Trustee Parker.
Here.
Trustee Joe.
Here.
Trustee Mike Bacardi.
Here.
President Clay.
Here.
Thank you, everyone. The record will show that all trustees are present for today's meeting.
Would you all join me in the late allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, have we posted all documents that are in accordance with the law?
Yes, sir. The agenda was posted in accordance with California Government Code by four ninety-five zero, specifically Section five, line five-six, related to noticing for special meetings, and also pursuant to District Resolution three, four.
Thank you so much. And I just noticed, yes, special meeting is not on third, and I said, wake your meeting. That's mine, I'm sorry about that. I don't, or public comment, any, uh, member of the public that would like to speak, if you fill out a speaker slip, and if you can limit it to three minutes with a total of fifteen for everyone that wants to speak. I don't have any speaker slips, I'll soon. You don't want to say anything?
No.
Wow, okay then, well fantastic. We'll move on to the consideration of meetings of the, uh, minutes of the special meeting for December twelfth, two thousand nineteen.
Over to what?
Omen favored?
Aye.
And that passes five zero. Item number six, consideration of minutes of the special meeting for January seventh, two thousand twenty.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see. You could've, you could've approved that all.
Omen favored?
Aye.
And that passes five oh as well. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Anybody?
We don't have it.
Okay. Okay. Mister Manager, would you lead us through the consent agenda with?
Well, I would be happy to. So, uh, something you might notice, notice just right off of that is, uh, the consent agenda report is a bit more brief this month. Uh, made a decision to sort of whittle this down. I think the consent agenda reports in the past were super help, super helpful from a historical standpoint. Provided a lot of information in there, provided greater chronology of where we've been on a number of items, uh, just in the interest of efficiency. And those will always be there, and one idea is maybe I could bring those back in greater detail, maybe biannually or something, to provide a greater chronology of what's happened over the year. But I thought what I would do, uh, unless the board pleases otherwise, is, is to just, um, provide a, uh, more brief update on some current items. The two I'm gonna cover today are just our water production reports and then some stuff on CCWA. I put some, uh, material in the board package to supplement what's in here as the consent agenda report, but I'll just sort of dive right into it. If you have questions as we go, please just let me know. Uh, so overall, this is somewhat of a theme right now, but water production was significantly less per the month of December than the ten-year running average, uh, to meet lower than the past, both for domestic and rural residential, of course, including ag production as well and ag usage. It's just a function of amount of December, uh, lower customer demands, lower usage. Uh, what we have, as you can see in the board package, is, uh, total water usage of forty-nine acre feet for the month of December, which is off by nearly half of the ten-year historic average, uh, um, by more than half of one eighty-five. So, we're significantly down in usage, but the good news is, um, from a supply standpoint, things are looking pretty good, and we'll get more into that as we go. Uh, the reservoir is looking good, it's above, um, well above a hundred thousand, a hundred thirty-nine thousand acre feet at about seventy-two percent. Uh, there's a decent amount of rainfall in Kachuma, he has, uh, you know, a mild amount of inflow, but that's suffice it to say that the, uh, I would think the ever, um, watershed is, is becoming charged, and so if we come into some weather patterns here in February, uh, into March, which is not uncommon, uh, we could see some substantial inflow into the reservoir. Evac was sort of on track for December, two hundred fifty-nine acre feet. We have some other, just back, little bit of background information that remains in terms of releases that are required, uh, under the biological opinion. Because we're above a hundred thousand and twenty acre feet, and we're in the last instilling year, uh, we're maintaining a five seafest flow rate at, um, one fifty-four for purposes of the fishery. So for the month of December, you can see on the bottom of page one of your report, two hundred and one point five acre feet releases to Hilton Creek and a hundred ninety-one acre feet releases to, uh, the stealing basin through the outlet works. Uh, has been, has been reported in prior months, we have a hundred percent allocation again for Kachuma for the nineteen-twenty year, which began October, November, twenty-nine to end runs until September thirtieth of, of twenty-twenty. A hundred percent allocation, that, that gives us twenty-six fifty-one, that's what we delivered in Kachuma.
Don't we issue your-
Yes, sir.
You said the interrupt-
I'm sorry.
No. Don't we take a twenty percent cut, but what's the seventy percent level?
Below a hundred thousand acre feet, we're supposed to take.
A hundred thousand.
That's right.
That's the first cut.
That's the first cut.
The second was the seventy percent.
Right, there.
Okay, I was, oh, right, right. Also, just, uh, it doesn't matter, right? If it's a map, our, our averages is below our ten-year average by a thirty percent. You wanna do that map, it indicates another reason why. Income is tight. Obviously thirty percent left waters, sales are gonna hurt the bottom line.
That's right.
That's exactly. Customers are doing too good a job of saving. I should say that, that they, we asked them for twenty-five, and they gave us forty-four forty, and they're still hanging down there. This is okay, but it still hurts the bottom line, just that, just look at that number, thirty-eight, thirty-six eighty-four, where it used to be fifty-two, thirty-five.
Good difference.
It is a big difference.
Yeah, yeah.
Couple with more sophisticated irrigation and a lot of other stuff. I think that's pretty good to stay the same. Probably instead of going back up to where it was. You see more draw yards and more landscape.
Rock landscape.
Yeah, less, less water for landscape.
Yeah. Yeah.
Just something to keep in the back of our minds. The dollar did not as heavy as it used to be.
That's true.
True.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but it's- Don't be sorry at all, it's a good observation. I said, you know, off by fifty percent, but I think your observation was better, it's less, at least for the month of December, it's less than fifty percent of the ten-year average. Uh, so moving on, in addition to our hundred percent allocation this year for Kachuma, we have a pretty substantial amount of carryover from last year, which is subject to evaporation. Uh, at the CCWA Office Committee, I had an off, um, uh, circuit discussion, if you will, with, with, um, an agency on the South Coast who may be interested in, if ID one can work with them, they're, so Coon River is sort of a, a tight spot for water. Uh, I think they're gonna be continuing to talk to other South Coast member agencies, but, uh, Mike wants to come up here and talk to us as well about, uh, any potential for ID one to be able to work with them with some of our carryovers, so that's something that we're gonna be discussing with them more in the month of February. Uh, looking at DWR supplies, uh, from the state water project, our Table A allocation for this year is only ten percent. It was only ten percent at the time of this writing. After the agenda was produced, we got a notice from DWR, date of January twenty-fourth, they bumped the allocation a little, walking fifteen percent. Uh, now with all of the precipitation that, uh, the Sierra's received already this year and is anticipated for the rest of the year, we can only anticipate that that amount is gonna continue to bump up. Uh, but we're, we're only at fifty, fifteen percent right now, which is seventy-five acre feet for ID one, but again, we think that number's gonna continue to climb.
They always start low like that in December, just-
They do.
To not embarrass itself later, because we have had snow surveys in April, whether it was like rock and grass to look at for snow. Right now, what is the snow level, something like seventy percent of what it should be at this point?
Mm-hmm.
Something like that.
Well, it started off above, above, yeah, a hundred percent. And so it's, as the, the storms have dwindled off, it's become a little less, but I think it's gonna be a pretty strong year for the, for the Sierra.
Oh, right.
Unfortunately, though, it, these days, it doesn't seem to translate to those hundred percent allocations from the state water project that we've received, and that's a function of just the bottom net in the Delta. Doesn't matter how much water is, is in the upper reservoirs, or in the system, or in the snowpack, uh, just because of the, yeah, the very narrow window when we can get water through Old Mill Rivers and out through San Luis and through, through, through banks and whatnot, it's just, it's tough to get a hundred percent anymore.
That has become political football.
The regulatory drought, right.
This is, in fact, you said, you lied.
It's a regular drought right now.
Right, you said, you lied, we're back in here, consent agenda, the other guy screwed up the art, Sacramento.
They have a scary document.
That's a, that's a obscene issue. Now you figure out how much is gonna cross, but now you figure out how to build it either, so. Ray Stokes of CCWA says, I bet it's ten years before they break the ground.
Really? Yep. And I have a piece of information in here on that, I'm just gonna touch on it super briefly, but finishing up on state water, uh, supplies available to ID one, we ended the twenty-nineteen year pretty much, you know, right on the, on the money. We, at the end of November, we had a balance of forty-nine acre feet for Table A. They talked about, again, because of the, the positive precipice in the Sierra watershed, about the potential for spill in San Luis reservoir. So at the end of November, we had a balance of, um, fifty-five acre feet. We took forty-nine acre feet of deliveries from the state project, uh, in December, we allocated all forty-nine to our Table A, so we only have six acre feet of carryover. Uh, so we're at virtually little risk, or zero risk of spill from San Luis, so we're doing pretty well there, as opposed to some other entities right now that are looking to offload if they can, some of their, their carryover in, in San Luis to avoid using that for spill. Uh, the second item that I have in consent is just a brief report on CCWA. Uh, as we, uh, may recall, there were virtually no deliveries of CCWA water into the reservoir for the year of twenty-nineteen because of the mix-up with the, the pumping facilities and, and the outlet works. At the beginning of January, they finally started delivering, delivering some water to the state, I think in total, they've put, um, what is it, a hundred and twenty feet up there, it's reflected in the course, uh, but not, not near as much as, um, as much water as could be, a hundred and twelve acre feet, starting on January third, and that was up to January twentieth, they put, they put a hundred and twelve acre feet. They finished the facility that went up, they took it out of the spillway, they're delivering state supplies into the reservoir, they took it out of the spillway because of potential spill of Kachuma this year. They put it alongside the spillway, um, anchored it to the, to the side, and up and over Bradbury Dam, there's a, there's an appearance that, that allows the water to travel over the dam, where people can still drive over the dam. Uh, so it's a, it's a piece of equipment that water will flow through it, and it's like a track that goes over it. So, be that as it may, it's reduced some of the delivery capacity for the South Coast agencies into Kachuma, but for, again, all twenty-nineteen, they weren't putting any water into the reservoir, and now they have the ability to do that again. We're not gonna cover it in this meeting, or as it covered in the materials here, but there was an incidental consequence to, um, CCWA not being able to get water up through the pipeline, into the lake, caused some nitration issues for us, uh, at the end of the line here, because normally that's able to be cleaned up when they're flowing water through and up over into the reservoir, but when it gets sort of stale here at the end of the line, um, it, it became problematic for, for Beelton, for Solvang, for ID one. We eventually went off state water in December and turned our reservoirs over, um, and went to pre-chlorine, and, and we had to deal with that. And when they came back on toward the, uh, beginning of January, they were, they were telling us that it was available again, and the nitration issue had resolved, which it had, but operationally, it, it does create, um, not just a supply issue for the South Coast, but it, it creates a potential quality issue for us when they have complications getting water, state water into the reservoir. So, these are things we went, uh, both the supervisors, um, our regulatory, um, our Water Resources Associate Lydia, and I went and met with CCWA, uh, at the end of December, we talked about the issues we were experiencing, just wanted to have an open discussion with them, and make sure that we know as soon as possible, uh, once they know that there are quality issues, that we wanna stay in communication and develop ways that we can mitigate these and, and not just be responding to them all of the time, uh, because it does create some pretty substantial operational issues for us. And so it was a good meeting, I think we can, uh, move forward a bit from that, um, especially with water going into the reservoir now, but, but just by way of lines of communication, I think we made clear that it's important to, uh, keep our channels of communication open. Uh, just real quickly, I guess, some other materials that are in here of consent, I included the agendas of the CCWA Operating Committee, the Finance Committee, the Board Directors Meeting, which I will want to touch upon later in the meeting today. That was on the twenty-third of this month, I was absent, but my participation had been specific, I've been, you know, I included in here, even though CCWA has officially opted out of DCP, that was the name of the project, um, they have issued a notice of preparation for, uh, an EIR for the single tunnel, uh, and, and like Carolyn was just mentioning, this is probably the start of the next fifteen years of litigation or something on DCP. I'd not be pesting this, but, uh, you know, it's just, it is the beginning of, of an environmental process, and, and who knows where it will go from there, but if, if the passage is any indication of opposition to things in the Delta, then, you know, we could see some in-front litigation coming up from that. What's not included here, mostly because it's not ready, but for suspended Table A, we're also getting ready, when I say we, CCWA is getting ready, but we're not there yet, to having a notice of preparation issued for, uh, the re-acquisition of the twelve-thousand plus acre feet of suspended Table A to come through, um, CCWA. So, when that, when that occurs, we'll, we'll let you know. Um, so unless the board has any comments on consent agenda report, that's all I have.
I have one question. That conveyance, if, uh, impact report comes back negative, and they really allow anything, um, what, what do you think the impacts percentage of our water, we, we able to give from them? Will it be, uh, a definite impact, or do you think it will be?
If I'm understanding your, your question correctly, if, if they're doing the IR and they don't choose an alternative, which is because-
Well, or they pick one where you, you don't, you don't get the-
You know what?
Yeah.
Well, then I think you're status quo, and you're under the Table A schedule where we are right now, and the forecasts have been, it's this iterative reduction over time in the long-term reliability of, of Table A supplies. So it, it's gone, like literally, you can track it, middle of the last ten to fifteen years, how the long-term average has gone down from, say, let's start with eighty-five percent, in the, in the mid-nineties, and then it's gone, you know, down and down from seventy, it was in the seventies for a while. Right now, they're saying, um, Table A without a tunnel, without either tunnels, long-term average is looking around sixty percent of Table A.
Fifty-two, something like that.
Yeah. I think sixty-two.
The thing about the tunnels, if you, if you opt out, which we did, everybody on CCWA did, um, when I stopped paying for it, the people that are gonna use the water are gonna pay for it. But, there's a big but. Not even that, yes, and what do they wanna risk on an earthquake that's gonna hit between now and nineteen, or two thousand sixty-two years ago or something?
Right.
And, and roll out some of those islands and, and allow in the rocky saltwater, which would make the Delta conveyance project we have now, the canal obsolete, because you wouldn't be able to use that ocean water. So they want the tunnels to eliminate that, but now the tunnel thing has become, like I said, a political football. Uh, unless we're developers, it's a different, the people that dig the tunnels, so that pulls up with a red flag, and by my, it's just natural, more suspicious than yours. But if you're, if you're gonna pull me up with a guy that's doing fourteen billions on a project, good god, look out. And fourteen billions of, which, you know, darn well will be probably twenty-eight million before it's done. I, I couldn't imagine how the arbitrary, just quit thinking about two tunnels and made it one tunnel. Well, what'd that do, the flow? Where are the numbers? And you said, we're gonna say, have two tunnels, we have one. Go with the map, uh, uh, Nevada, you know, uh, Sacramento, I've tried it, but it just doesn't look good. We were always off from breaking the ground, is my point.
It was a little arbitrary, and there are a number of factors, as the, as the board's aware, the cost was a significant one for this region, at least for CCWA, that's why we opted out, particularly in light of other alternatives that appear more secure, more cost-effective, like re-acquisition of, uh, suspended Table A and diversifying our regional portfolio. I, I think our, our ways where, where this region at least is, are looking to the best. Brad, did I answer your question?
Yeah, that's, I can see a death of agreeable impact, because, and I don't, you know, these are, you know, impact reports, they're never good, not in this state, you know, I figure it'll lose, lose out more water.
Well, they're, they're certainly on a rise for location, too, so the, the opposition will come out of the woodwork against DCP, like they have for, for prior projects, so we're just gonna have to sit back and see how, see how that pans out. One other thing I did put in your package, which you'll see in the CCWA agendas, is this potential, um, supplemental water purchase program. So we've signed, we've, CCWA assigned a letter in the tent with Mojave Water Agency for a four-for-one exchange. I just don't know if there's gonna be enough CCWA participants who are needing water, um, to, to participate in the program. It's, I think, fourteen hundred acre feet, uh, I mean, it's, on paper, the, the program's compelling, I just don't know if we have the demand. Uh, fourteen hundred acre feet, it roughly, you know, three hundred plus dollars acre foot plus, oh, and, oh, and P delivery charges, um, and so it's, for every, um, uh, acre foot, we, we provide back, CCWA, every agency can provide back, we can get four in exchange for that. So it's a, it's a lot of water, but, uh, again, from the demand standpoint, I'm not sure that we're gonna get the participation, but it's something that's available, and we'll see how the rest of the water year turns out.
Some years ago, that would've been very attractive.
Right.
Very attractive.
But what is good, I think, from a statewide perspective, is, is there are agencies who are participating in that, and, and so the, the bigger agencies who can bank large volumes of water, whether it be Mojave, or Kern, or even down in Irvine, I, I think it can help when things do get dry and relieve, uh, some of the pressure on the state system to, to help us out, which indirectly helps us out, um, when times get tough, even if we're not directly with this.
Well, any, uh, areas that are in overdraft, their groundwater, be looking at that, to maybe replenish?
I think so.
Okay.
May I just, uh, have a word about my understanding?
Sure, real quick, Brad, yeah.
Okay, uh, we're, we're focusing on one flush coming out of the Federal River, going through Glendale County, and on the way around, trying to get through the I and Sacramento. We're, but I never heard the big picture about where are all the underwater coming from to go into the state? I never hear about the Colorado River. I attended a, um, a, a series of lectures in, uh, September in Utah, Southern Utah, Niskalanti, to be specific, and some of the professors, uh, there was two, uh, people there from the University of Utah. One of them, Professor, is the ad hoc manager of the flow through the Colorado River, through the state of Utah. And two things came out. One was, obviously, the flow is less, continuously less, it's going down just like you described here for state water delivery. And so the discussions are now centering upon, uh, more fervently, uh, raised the red flag, and that is to empty one of the other lakes, Mead or Powell, because of the evaporation that's occurring, because of the large area. The only way to survive and keep it levels for some period of time. So what effect is that having on, on the central coast, or this all-American canal? I mean, as the water size is dwindled all the way around, there's no open reservoirs anywhere. No, the tunnel to me is, is mesquite compared for, how do we start, uh, uh, providing more water in, in terms of pulling it back from, from keeping it through open pressure?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Do we have anything else?
That's it for consent.
Okay, uh, anything, questions on that, Brad? Did you have anything else? Your question got answered, hardened, it was good, or ready?
The water.
Okay, then let's move on to item nine, the manager report, and I've really been looking forward to this, but I'm gonna turn it back over to our manager.
I'm looking forward to it, too. I'm, I'm really excited, and hopefully this is a preview of coming attractions. Uh, it's-
Do you approve the, uh, consent? Says-
Sorry, ma'am.
We want to approve it.
Yeah, typically do approve the consent.
Okay, we want to go back. All right, I take motion to approve the consent agenda. Some more on second. Sorry, you're doing it wrong. You moved it, you seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes by, right? No, that's good, that's good, thank you. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, so, yeah, I'm, I'm really excited about this, and hopefully this is something, uh, that we'll see more of in coming months, but we just wanted to take a, an opportunity to introduce, uh, two folks from, from the district. I'm just gonna introduce them both at once, and, and then I think they, they have some, a couple introductory remarks to make to you guys. First is Distribution and Operations Supervisor, Richard Armstrong, and we also have our Construction and Maintenance Supervisor, Joe Coman, and I just wanted to feature them for the board, for our public, uh, let them say a little bit about themselves, and, you know, for, we are, um, small but mighty, uh, for, for a district our size, and the things that we take on a day-to-day basis, but, but just overall on an annual basis, the portfolio we manage, the system we manage, to make sure that three hundred sixty-five days a year, twenty-four-seven, literally, that we have wholesale portable, reliable, sufficient water supplies, um, through a very diverse network of infrastructure is, is something to behold, and we do it on a super lean crew, and these are two of the folks that lead that crew, and, and so I just wanna feature them and give them an opportunity to recognize themselves, too. So, Richard's one of the words.
Thank you.
Hello, yeah, my name's Richard Armstrong. I've been with the district for two years. I've got a total of twelve years in the water industry completely, uh, before here. I worked for two years up at the City San Luis, for their water supervisor. Uh, that brought me up here from the Pasadena area, I worked in water at a small district down there for eight years, before I got my experience in treatment, distribution, everything that basically allowed me the opportunity to come to the place here. Um, I carry a D-five, T-four certification, so even though our positions throughout my whole career is not warranted to be certification like that, it's just something that I wanted to keep going, to get that knowledge in the water industry and just keep building on. Uh, my, my daily duties are supporting the office with customer service related, anything that, that's going on, customer service is gonna come for me, make sure we're getting everything in detail out in the field. Uh, we're operating our, our pumps, our pump stations, managing the water reservoirs, keeping the water in the pipe, starting to speak, you know, so that everybody has the water, kind of reliable water. Um, our biggest push right now that we're doing is we're doing a meter change-out program. All the details that's going into that, the accuracy that's needed for that, uh, it's moving along perfectly so far, it's not coming with, but, uh, that's our big push, man. So, thank you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you.
And you?
Yeah.
My name's Joe Coman, uh, Maintenance Construction Supervisor, uh, lived here in San Andres. Um, uh, I'm a former marine, I've been, I've got twenty years in construction, eleven of the years are, uh, with, uh, the, um, operating engineers. Um, we, I'm, I'm fluent in, in any kind of equipment, basically, um, sewer pipe, drainage utilities, water mains, testing, back tea, um, everything from- testing, back tea, um, everything from freeway construction to paving. Uh, I've been with the two big companies, only two big companies since I got out of the services, Babbage Construction and ARB, which is now PSC, um, uh, Primorous Services Corporation. I've been here at the district for a year and three months, I've attained my D one, my T one. Um, I take a test in March for my D two. Uh, these aren't necessarily things that I need to do for the maintenance side of it, but I'm not gonna be in a position where I don't know how to do that, so that's why I'm that way. I also carry, I also have a general A license, a general A licensed contractor, um, I keep that just to have it. Uh, I, I'm hired here for general maintenance, emergency things, uh, we're very busy, as you know, we're dealing with an aging infrastructure, so it, it's a constant. You know, along with just helping Richard and everybody else with keeping potable water and stuff, you guys all know, a lot of things break. So the mechanical and, and maintenance side of the system is huge, it's a constant. So, I think that's, I think that's it, love the work here, and it's been good so far, so I appreciate it.
It's been fun, Richard. Could we ask a couple questions, guys?
Yeah, I have, thanks a lot for your service, you guys are great, guys. And, um, and you're, you're the hands-on, okay, that's what I love seeing you guys here. What do you think is like an issue out there that we should be kind of looking at? There's one out there, doesn't have to be one, but there's something that's on the horizon, we need to be maybe thinking about preparing for, in each of your fields? You guys see anything?
I'll go real quick. Aging infrastructure, our pipelines, a lot of our pipelines, one big thing that we look at on a day-to-day basis is where they're located, and the problems with that, a lot of trees, a lot of, um, things that just, you know, Mother Nature or something, stir up and breaks our minds, and so it, uh, huge thing is infrastructure as far as piping.
The piping.
Yeah.
I mean, I kind of, I always brought it up, is we have, we have ninety miles of pipe, and all of it is sixty years old. It's got a hundred-year lifespan, if we replace one mile of pipe every year, it takes ninety years. Well, a lot of the stuff is not gonna work for ninety more years. So that's our biggest thing, is infrastructure.
Mine, you know, all the stuff that I've seen since I've been here, piping wise, is really good shape.
Yeah, the pipe's in good shape, it's just in family.
Really good shape. So that, that, we can, yeah. Yeah, you know, depending on different things, of course, you know, tran- transmission lines are, they're typically, I mean, you can get a lot of years on them, but once you start tapping into them and becoming a distribution line out of them, you start having your problems, so, you know, just.
Do we, do our lines get promotion on the inside and start weakening, or is it just?
Not like you would think, I mean, we've, we've, everything that I've seen, I've seen quite a bit in a year and three months, and it's, our lines look decent.
They look good. But there usually leaks are caused by tree roots, because it's underneath a row of trees, instead of like out in, in, underneath asphalt or something like that. So that's our.
Now, depending on locations too, you know, soil has a lot to do with what's going on with the color protection and all that. Obviously, none of that was put in when this line was put in, so, um, there are sections of line where are more problem, problematic than others, and a lot of that has to do with soil, but, um, not, it's.
Just the soil movement, is that what you mean?
Few and far between, well, you have expansive clay soil that, that you get movement, but you also have soil that, um, is, you need more cathodic, you need cathodic protection for the soil.
Would it explain, what is that, or not promote that current, what kind of protection?
Cathodic protection, it's, you, you basically have electrical charge on your.
Kind of like a corrosion.
Promotes corrosion. And like corrode, okay? So, a, a lot of times, you know, well, gas mains are a big one, they deal a lot with it because of their gas one. And most of their stuff, all their transmission lines are, are steel, so you, you realize we have steel lines too. But, you know, we don't per se have, we don't have near the steel lines, so. But we do, you have ductile iron and all that stuff, so, they are susceptible to that stuff, so. As a whole, though, I haven't seen, you know, there's only very few sections that, that are that way, so.
Richard brings up a good point too, I mean, with our system being put in in the sixties, uh, you, you know, the alignment of, of, whether it's for mains or laterals or, or small mains, uh, you know, people have grown rows of trees, uh, over some of our, uh, infrastructure, and as those trees grow and they wrap around things, and Mother Nature's stronger than the trees we can build, and they break. But I'll tell you, like I said before, we, we are gonna be bringing more of our team just to introduce to you, and so we all know each other a bit more as a small team, but, but this is a perfect example. Joe and Richard are really the scenic one, and our ability to provide a lot of water service, I've seen them both personally in the field, and we could be supported by a better set of supervisors, uh, they're like surgeons in what they do, and I mean that literally. Uh, it's just, it's, uh, it's, you know, I marvel when I watch them, and so I just wanna make sure that, um, you both have the opportunity here as part of me to get to know each other a bit more, and, and because, you know, we all rely on each other as, as a district in doing this, so.
Good, appreciate it. Questions?
I'd like to thank you guys personally, and passing on to the rest of your staff. It's, it's their efforts that make our job easier. And, and, uh, if, if I can blow a little bit of smoke for the whole ID one, for you guys all down to the, whoever the lowest worker be may be, and twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, our customers probably can't remember the last time they were out of water, do they? Something we screwed up. They make complain a lot, they make bellyache a lot, but our customers are pretty well-treated.
Yeah.
And, and yes, their efforts on these people that make our, our job easier. Thank you again. And also, you're still a marine, let's bring over to the.
Yeah, thank you, guys, appreciate it, I know that, uh, whether you're a water district, a bank, a grocery store, a church, the quality of the organization is the quality of the people, and that's why we can do what we do, 'cause guys like you, so thank you so much. It doesn't go unnoticed, unfortunately, in this kind of business, no news is good news, when you hear nothing, you're doing your job right. But I just wanna say, it, it, we noticed, so thank, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Have a good day.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, um, let's move on to item D, District Administration.
Go bear out the stick.
You know, I'm sorry, let me just go back real quick, um, wasn't it obvious that, you know, they're getting these certifications that they don't, they just do it because they wanna be ready, but Joe and Richard, they're going above and beyond, that was the, the feeling I got anyway. They, they wanna be one step above to be ready for anything, that's just, that's, that's a lot of integrity there. Richard being on, was it D five, T five, or was it?
He's a D five.
Okay, D five, T four. D five, T five is about, it's the highest you could, I mean, this guy is, is, in terms of being, uh, water quality certified, he's, he's really at the top of his scale. And, uh, yeah, and I think it's just been a personal motivation of his, and he brought that qualification with him to the district to just, once he started, he was gonna make sure that he was, he knows what he needs to know in his occupation, so. Pretty fortunate to have those guys.
And just to add on to that, Joe's position does not require any type of specialized certification for his position, and as soon as he came to the district, he went to classes and he took his certs, he had his certs within the first, uh, six months. Uh, his, he had a recent distribution within the first six months of him playing with us, all on his own, so.
That's, yeah, he wants to know everything about, he, he gets involved, and he's just that type.
Well, there you go, that's what you said, you, thank you, man.
That's right, yeah. Exactly right, exactly right, fantastic. All right, so we'll move on to item D, District Administration. Barry's gonna handle this one?
Great, uh, so in your blue folders is our monthly income and expense, um, for the month of December. Um, if you take a look at the first two pages, it'll show you your bar chart. And basically, these two pages, one's income, the first one's income, the second one is expense, it's basically break down into percentages. Um, on the first one, uh, where our revenues come from, and almost fifty-six percent of our revenues are derived from the services sales revenue, and, um, forty-four percent, excuse me, is direct from assessments fees and other, uh, fees that we receive. Uh, moving on to the expense page, it's pretty self-explanatory, just the same as the income summary. Uh, but our largest expense you can see in the text box down there is sixty percent of our expenses is for our source of supply expenses, which consists of our water purchases and everything like that. So that's where the brunt of our expenses are for our operations, and then it declines from there percentage wise. So, uh, if you wanna move on to the statement, the actual statement of revenue and expenses, I'm just gonna highlight a few things here for you, uh, under the water sales income. For water sales comparative to November, water sales were down thirty-eight percent from the prior month, like Peter said, due to weather conditions and then low customer demand during the, during the month that we had. So that was a significant drop in water sales for us. Moving down a little farther, I wanted to highlight, uh, under the, uh, other revenues, uh, specifically item account number six-two-seven-zero-zero-zero, we received our first infusion of tax revenue, in the amount of four hundred and sixty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight dollars and forty cents. And the next installment will occur in April of this year. And as you remember, we budgeted, um, the tax allowance to be eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the fiscal year. So we're already basically half there. Um, moving down into expenses, uh, I, everything is pretty status quo for source of supply, that's all of our general expense for chum and water, state water, and groundwater charges. Um, I did want to highlight, um, under the pumping expenses, you can see due to the low production, our pumping expenses dropped sixty-two percent from the prior month. And again, that's due to the low demand that we have going on right now. Uh, moving downward, uh, transmission and distribution and general and administrative expenses, there were, um, and special studies, there was nothing out of the ordinary for any of those areas this month, those seem pretty static. And it's typical of the, uh, for the month of January for us to see these figures like that. I did wanna move, and bear with me, I'm trying to roll this down here, first time doing this with this. Um, I did wanna move down to the construction in progress areas at the very bottom of the page. So with regard to construction in progress, some of the activity here reflects the budgeted, uh, projects that we have, and that includes the meter replacement program, and we just, uh, thus far have completed two route changeouts. And we also received our, the handheld equipment, so the, the hard equipment that we used for that, and then the software that we need to run, uh, with the new Neptune meters. Um, we also, uh, if you look at account nine-hundred-three-seven-two, the computers and equipment, we did a computer replacement for nine, uh, computer stations at the office, um, dating back, so we replaced computers dating back to two thousand and twelve. So it was long overdue, um, and so we, we're on a better operating system with those as well, so that was the expense there. And then, uh, this included our first half of our fiscal year, we're running for, we've now started our second half of the fiscal year. So this remaining six months of the nineteen-twenty budget will be focused a lot on the CIP projects that we have for infrastructure, like the guys were discussing. Uh, we anticipate major projects such as the lateral tube replacement project, the multiple hydrants and valve replacements to occur, as well as a large data upgrade project, and then meter replacement will continue through the rest of this fiscal year to next. So you will definitely see an increase in those expenses over the next six months. Um, so to close, uh, as you can see, revenues exceeded expenses for the month of December by about five hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and my year-to-date reflects one point eight million dollar surplus, which as you know, will be utilized at the end of the year to make our annual state water payment, as well as our comb bond payment to handle current June. So, before I have any questions, I think I have to answer them.
Any questions, guys, and ladies?
All right.
Move it right along. Okay, I think we're good, I think we can, uh, keep moving to, uh, accounts payable. Paid bills, and then, uh, have questions, have Ed a chance to look over the accounts table?
Which is, uh, this is kind of due to?
Yes, yes.
It's got to be one.
One D, yes, nine D, one D, exactly. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Nevis Ferguson, I'm a private.
Ferguson is the company that we purchased the meters from, the Neptune meters, and we, we, we replaced the parts who out there, do that replacement work, the switch out work, uh, basic plastic materials, so. Yeah, so some things will expand. And I can just point out a couple more, the CIO Solutions fifteen thousand dollar line item, that's for the nine computers we set up and, and in addition to our monthly support from CIO, that Mary was mentioning on the second page, uh, SM FanCom and San Maria's FanCom High Supply, uh, those are five hydrants and replacement parts as part of our hybrid replacement, uh, program that's ongoing. The twelve thousand, one twenty-four seventy-five to the State Water Resources Control Board, that acronym, that's associated with fee.
Is formerly Ferguson, I think, or Bar, Barlow?
San FanCom, is that formerly Ferguson? Is that right? I don't know the answer to that, I don't, I don't think so.
They were a big supplier, they all were, they're a big supplier. I thought maybe that's a lot, but even though.
I think they're competitors, I think they, we supply them both, we're the prices.
I'm sorry?
They're competitive with Ferguson. Corrus is another new seal on here, it's another new, the Corrus is a supplier.
That was it, the, uh.
Yeah, here's Ferguson on the front page, yeah. I'm sorry, they named that last.
The twelve thousand, the state board was for, we just filed our annual, uh, reports for our river licenses, and that is associated with that. Any questions?
Uh, who pay the bills?
Okay. On paper?
Aye.
Okay, passes five, zero, move on to D one C, the, uh, our covenant coverage. Series A bond, very familiar.
Okay, so in your board package, you will find the district's annual disclosure statement for the CCWA bond. Uh, this is pursuant to the Central Coast Water Authority Bond Adventure, uh, that the district is required to annually submit, uh, financial information to the bond trustee to ensure that the district is complying with the one point two five rate covenant requirement for the bond. The information contained in the disclosure is actually extrapolated from a bunch of different sources. Uh, it comes from the district audited financial statements, from our district's billing system, and also from our capital facilities charges and estates that the board approves. Um, and as you can see from the last page of the actual disclosure document, um, the district, uh, now exceeded the one point two five requirement total, for a total rate coverage of one point nine one for the two thousand and nineteen fiscal year. Uh, and I just wanted to report that this information was submitted to the CCWA on January eighth. Um, and just as a side note, uh, the district will also be preparing the second disclosure statement that we have to do, and that one will be due in March, and that's for the series two thousand and four A bond, uh, for the comb bonds that we, we, uh, have as well. So, if the board has any questions?
So if the board has any questions about any of the information contained in the disclosure document, I'd be happy to answer to the best of my ability for passing to Peter.
Questions? Brad? No? Okay, we'll keep moving to item ten, Kachuma Project. Okay?
Thank you, Jeff. We don't have too much to report under the ten, item ten-A or B, in addition to what we covered in the consent agenda report regarding the Kachuma project, although I do want to note a bit of an informal update, if you will, but I did attend the Pacific Water Users Conference, it's not even in the Pacific anymore, now it's the Great California Basin Conference, I think. But anyway, I was, I was attending that last week at Reno and as part of an update for not only Kachuma but other projects, the Paracord State Water Project, or not the State Water Project, but the CDP of Bryan, there were some, there were some representatives from reclamation providing stats or updates for contracts and whatnot. Michael Jackson indicated, give his correct words in his mind, I think he said, it's likely or probably will happen that the Kachuma project contract will go interim. We are set to expire in September twenty-twenty. As we've been reporting to the board, we've been pressing reclamation, we've been pressing the county for a status in terms of a basis of negotiation to be issued to kickstart some discussions and negotiations about what our next contract will look like. It's going to be substantially different than the one we have, given that we've paid an obligation satisfied, essentially a water delivery contract and arrangement. We've been pushing for literally almost years now, probably eighteen months on reclamation to consider alternative frameworks for what that contract would look like, whether it be a multi-party signatory arrangement where Kachuma members will have what signatures on the contract. As we've reported before, the county's been quite insistent that it will remain a two-party contract because, well, just because, that's the way it was done before. So we haven't really taken that answer to the bank yet. We're continuing to work hopefully with the county, but certainly with reclamation on discussing other alternatives. We understand that one was recently executed up in Sacramento County where the water users, the actual water purveyors and contractors became more directly involved in the contract itself with reclamation when the county came along grudgingly, but it serves, at least it's one example for a framework that could be used here. All of that to say, again, that Michael Jackson announced in a, in a public meeting that it doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have a new contract by September thirty. Frankly, I think that would be a possibility, but at least we got some crack at the armor, some, some recognition acknowledging that there's a degree of likelihood that we could go interim alone. So, but that would give us an opportunity hopefully to, to kickstart a real serious process, like we don't have a new contract, we were forced to be interim because we didn't really get to the table soon enough and that, again, hopefully provided a bit as far as to start the process, for us to have a direct seat at the table, to get some other parties who are affected, i.e. the downstream interests involved in the negotiation process, at least to have all of those rights and interests protected as part of the new things that will have to be hammered out in a new contract with reclamation. So that's the update I have for the Kachuma project, items ten, eight, one and two.
Questions? Brad, you got any?
Nope.
Okay, let's move on to ten-B Sigma.
Sure, I just have a brief set of information for you on Sigma. I was going to break it up in sort of three categories here, the first being an update for the EMA. You'll remember at the last regular item on board meeting in December, the item that we presented to you, staff, was item one's proposed approval of the intra-basin administrative agreement. This is the agreement among the three GSA's or a member of the EMA Eastern Management Area. And the item one board approved that, or one of but several signatories throughout the basin. The agreement is being teed up, I think the parent district has, maybe the parent district's approved it, we've approved it, it might be going soon to the city of Solvang, City Council. And frankly, it's been teed up for agencies throughout the basin to have approval of this agreement, to put in place some administrative measures among the three GSA's. The Citizens Advisory Group for the EMA last met on Thursday, January ninth at the parent district. I was unable to attend that, I only attended CAG meetings. I was at the CCWA Ops Committee, so I did receive a report from Bill Builo of the parent district and Matt Young of the County Water Agency who reported that the Citizens Advisory Group went over the draft data management plan. It's the second component that's been publicly released for the GSP. So they spent some time going over the data management plan. There'll be an opportunity probably at the next GSA committee meeting for the CAG to present their comments on the draft data management plan. But from what I understand, in addition to wanting to cover that topic, the CAG, again, Citizens Advisory Group, was wanting to devote some time in that meeting to cast and making sure that, that the net is cast broad enough for stakeholder engagement. This is something that's a very important focus of the, of the CAG and of course is the overall process of the, of the GSA, GSA and the GSP development. Without community and stakeholder involvement and engagement and knowledge, it could, it can be tougher as you get toward the end. The more we can engage, the greater diversity of perspectives and interests that could be affected at the outset, I think the more robust and defensible the processing of the project will be overall. And so that's a, it continues to be a focus of the CAG, it continues to be a focus of the GSA here in the Eastern Management Area and for, and for the other GSA's throughout the basin. So I just wanted to provide that update to you. As a second matter, what I've done is I've included here in the, in our board packet, schedule of meetings that was published or circulated by the parent district, meeting dates for the GSA's. They're nice enough to put meeting dates that quarter of the meetings there up top, but what's really nice is here in one place are the meeting dates for the three different GSA committees throughout the rest of twenty-twenty, the EMA being the middle one, but by no means should, in my opinion at least, members of the public necessarily focus on the EMA. If you live here, the EMA, there are opportunities to go learn more about Sigma, learn more about how the CMA, the WA, WM, excuse me, integrate into our portion of the basin and how ultimately these three ground markets, just ability plans, you can speak the Sigma language. So there, on one sheet of papers, is a schedule for the meetings, not only of the EMA, next one of course, February twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty, down at, as City of Solvang, City Council Chairman, so Brad will attend, and I usually attend his staff as well. But, but again, you can, you can see right there, hopefully the public can make themselves available, do, attend as many of these meetings as possible and come up to speed to the greatest extent feasible, to share as much information with friends, family, other stakeholders as possible. We can always do so much to get the word out and I know folks at the Rouse Base and are continuing to brainstorm on further ideas to broaden the net, whether it's additional publications, public service announcements, this being one of them. All we can do is try to encourage people to, to come and attend and to review and provide comment over and over and over again. So I'm sorry, although that's really not a very sincere apology. You've been here for me a lot. I'm going to be here at every meeting, at every meeting with a Sigma GSA and every grounds I can, encouraging people to attend and to participate in Sigma, because it will affect everyone's interest, item ones, stakeholders, hoppers, and more we can do it as a collective, unified, integrated, inclusive effort to that. Okay?
Yeah, that's well said.
The last thing I wanted to talk, yes, sir?
Solvang had not formed their committee yet, or what did you say, something earlier about Solvang?
All I said about the Sigma solving is I believe that they're going to be bringing the intra-basin administrative agreement to their city council for approval, just like item one did. Of course, they haven't done it yet, but they're probably on the cusp of doing it.
You have to wear a black jacket, or do you want to?
I thought it was on their agenda, I think.
No, I, yeah, that's, that's my knowledge, Brad, but it was and I missed it at all.
I thought they had something on there, maybe they were reviewing it, but they were, it was on their agenda.
Okay, I can take a look at that. But again, that's an agreement, Harlan, that's going to be taken before course of the city councils throughout the basin, so we happen to be upfront on it because we're involved in drafting it. The parent district and item one took a real strong role in just getting it together, circulating it to all the other parties and so it was already teed up for us, so we were kind of upfront.
Come with the best.
So the last thing I wanted to report under this agenda item is just a Sigma statement, statewide maybe a little broad, but what I put in your agenda packet here are a couple examples of Santa Barbara County. So both the Paso basin and the Cuyama basin, as you've heard before, are high priority basins, critical overdraft as designated by DWR. So their GSPs are due at the end of this month, January thirty-first, twenty-twenty. Both areas, Paso has approved theirs, Cuyama, although they sort of flew under the radar press-wise out there, Cuyama. I did find on their agenda for their December fourth GSA meeting, and I confirmed with Matt Young and the county that in fact on December fourth, the Cuyama GSP was adopted as well. So there are two critically overdrafted basins in Santa Barbara County who did comply. They made it in time, they, they started earlier, they were more engaged, they really have motivation, they have the stick behind them, like the state president, if they did comply, but kudos to them because they were able to set some differences aside and, and get their GSPs adopted now. This could be a grand opportunity or, or, or a important time when either the state is going to get some feedback or, or when it comes to implementation, they could encounter some obstacles from the various stakeholders in the basin, we don't know. But of course, it's just nice that we do have some examples, basins out there in front of us are doing, hoeing the road for us, if you will, and giving us some examples of things to come for our basin and for the neighboring San Antonio basin. What I also included was just a notification, this was an email that the Houston I received, about a workshop that, two workshops, one I think was conducted at Paso and one was in Clovis. My understanding is that Bill Builo, again, from the parent district and Matt Young from the County Water Agency have the opportunity to attend this workshop. It was just really, again, I think it was a function of some of these GSPs coming due and DWR availing themselves about, you know, how we're going to be evaluating the GSPs that are submitted, what the assessment process is going to be, what the approval process is going to be, annual reporting requirements, and assistance programs that are going to be available to help support GSP implementation. So there is a video available, I personally haven't watched it yet. I'm assuming to connect with Matt and Bill on a, on staff level and I'll report a period more on them about what type of materials or what sort of templates they add from the DWR workshop, but as they've been all along, remarkable, DWR, you have to credit them, they staffed up, they've been available, they're an incredible resource in terms of the grant funding, in terms of publishing FAQs, holding workshops, you know, you name it, publishing documents and guidelines on stakeholder engagement, they really led a pretty good charge and hopefully they'll continue to be there to support the statewide community as we're all getting our feet wet in Sigma. So that's what I have for item ten, Sigma. Of course, I have to answer a question.
I have a question. What happens if after, so Paso's adopted, or Cuyama's adopted, and then it goes for evaluation, what happens if it doesn't pass that evaluation? It doesn't get accepted?
Well, sort of ground zero, we don't know as of practice or matter exactly what will happen, but I suspect and I think there's a process that may be outlined, shame on me for not knowing the letter reversal of, of the regulations, but I believe where there's a process where if, if it doesn't pass muster, there is, if it doesn't pass review or DWR needs to be not compliant with the statute for requirements, I believe there's a, there's a window, if you will, and a process for DWR to identify what they perceive as the shortcomings, send it back to the GSP, to provide an opportunity for it to be reconstructed or improved or broadened compliance, then, you know, somewhat later, again, then go back to DWR, but ultimately, I think there's some time set forth, if ultimately there's not a compliant GSP prepared by the, by a given GSA, then that again triggers this process whereby the basin can be declared probationary, gives the state the opportunity to come in and implement Sigma and develop, a Sigma compliant GSP for the GSA that doesn't comply.
Without the GSA's input?
Well, one would hope that it's collaborative, but I think, I think the further down the compliance line you get, the, the less opportunity and flexibility you have and the more this, the state is, I think, leveraged to assert the regulatory ownership under regulations. Is that sound accurate, Mr. Lynch?
It does. Yeah, it's, it's like that.
You know, as Peter rightly said, this is something that the public should be aware of and, and should have an active voice in, it's going to affect us all, if we know it or not. Does the public have any comment on this? Any questions, any, anything you, because we got Brad and Peter here and?
Jeff?
Yes?
I just wanted to add to this GSA, there was an intra-agenda estimate Monday night at Solvang City Council meeting. They did agenda sizes on page hundred-and-nineteen for approval and I didn't hear anything that was disapproved.
Okay, yeah, thanks, Brad. You got friends?
Kevin and I also go to those meetings, not the CAG meetings, but one of them. The other Kevin, sorry. The, one of the members of CAG is Elizabeth Farden, who's also with WeWatch, so we're trying to get WeWatch to get the word out, to get the public involved and so, anything we can do to, to get the word out, I think that's really important.
Thank you for doing that, absolutely.
Well, WeWatch wants to get involved now? And what, what are your deadlines here, again?
Well, at least for our basin, now is, now is the time to do it, if, if not too late.
Yeah, it's like it's almost.
The time is yesterday, so, but, but really, Harlan, of, I would, I would say now is the perfect time, but always will be the perfect time to get involved because we're, so the two components of our GSP, and I think it stands true for the GSPs in the other management areas, but we've done a communication engagement plan in draft and we've done a data management plan in draft. And really, the data management plan is a, a framework for how you collect technical data, what your sources of data are, how you're going to assemble it, how you're going to store it, manage it, make it accessible, and how that data that you collect forms the basis for really embarking on a technical analysis, the real, the, the, the real substance of what will become the GSP. And so I, I think from an involvement standpoint, again, now is as good a time as ever to get involved, from an organizational standpoint, from a stakeholder, landowner, business, public agency standpoint, because once we start developing the technical data, that is then going to form the basis of identifying like the yield of the basin, the inputs, the outputs, the sustainability, where we are in terms of production versus replenishment and, and real big, big picture metrics that are then going to set the course for what they call management objectives, to avoid these undesirable results over the long term to the basin. And so, Harlan, it's a great question, it's, it's by no means too late and really it's, the time is now or very close nearing when we're going to get into the real heart, the real technical substance of this Sigma process. And, and I, and I suspect and I, and I hope. And, uh, and I, and I suspect and I, and I hope that the meetings become more well attended, that the stakeholder engagement increases and improves, and we start getting some more substantive feedback so that we can take all of those things into consideration. When I say we, the collective we, everyone in the basin, and try to get it as right as we can.
What tend to be like?
What does it go?
Or are there people coming to, uh, that are real interested or is it nonchalant?
Brad, it's...
It's better than our turnout.
Well, that's not saying a lot, but...
They're active. They're active. It, it fills a room. It fills a room.
Maybe fifteen to twenty people?
Yeah.
Fifteen to twenty, that's, yeah, that's definitely decent.
And they know, a lot of the stakeholders are there. They're, some are quiet in the crowd, they're just watching to see how it's gonna go.
Just wait.
Yeah.
Just wait.
It's, it's gonna be a hot issue because there's impacts.
Absolutely.
Potential restrictions and...
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm concerned more about the agricultural community. Is anybody saying anything at all?
Yeah.
Um, I'm surprised the parent district is, what we're staffing this without a little more discussion than what that...
There's agriculture. There's agriculture.
A million acres of farm right in Lake, Lake Idol?
No, we're, Harlan, we're assured here, we're fully engaged.
I don't, we don't have a billion acres anywhere near our particular environment here. Over there in the valley, there's, you plant a billion acres for the heat, again.
And Ag is as well, Harlan, Ag is, uh, well, excuse me, Jeff, Ag is well represented uh, on the various citizens, the three citizens advisory groups for the eastern, central and western areas, especially in the Long, Long Hope Plain. Um, and then, of course, the parent district, uh, sits with you and Solvang and the county on your, um, uh, groundwater sustainability agency. And we also have a seat on the, uh, central groundwater sustainability agency, which is mostly this Beelton and the parent district because it's a smaller area. And Beelton is the only kind of like government agency in that area. And then down in the Long Hope, we sit on, uh, Plain, we sit on that with the city of Long Hope, Mission Hills, and Vanburg Village Community Services.
Yeah, but there's a swath of agricultural area that we're not involved. Our, our, our boundary stops, like western edge of Solvang, there's a whole bunch of agricultural, we can hear in the ocean. We're not here, but that's your, that's your area.
Those two areas are well represented within. And I think on the citizens committee here, you have at least two people that were, A, related industries on, on that citizens advisory committee.
I'm glad.
Two out of seven.
It's kind of crazy.
Mostly ventures.
I figured it out.
No, it's true.
You're absolutely right.
I feel like a clown, a swan with a tail.
You can come to the grocery store.
Yeah, you don't notice water.
I have something that hasn't come up, and I don't know if it's really the law or not, but does fifty-five gallon per person a day going to fifty gallon per person today in five years or something like that? Is that the law from Sacramento?
No, federal, federal requirement dictates fifty-five gallon per day per person for health and safety reasons.
Okay.
But do the math, fifty-five gallons per day per person is a lot of water.
That's right, for us too, it's...
It's about six...
HFCs, uh...
It's about six units a day for the normal family on a normal city lot. Six units a month.
That's better, yeah.
And that's a lot of water.
Yeah, but you're saying that's a federal directive?
That's a, yes.
For health and safety?
I don't know if it's a law or what directive, but that's their opinion, I guess.
Fred, I'm sorry, I missed a question. I was at a sidebar, but in as much as this fifty-five GPCB standard is out there, it's part of the state law. And it's not one despite the, the, and it is known that you hear in the news sometimes or you see reports. It's not a standard that applies at the consumer level. It's a standard that applies to retail water agencies for establishing overall water use efficiency standards. And so it doesn't, you know, despite the reports you may see that, oh, California's can't take a shower, neither laundry is in Dallas. That's, it's been debunked by all sorts of water agencies, look at the Aqua website, it's, it does not apply at the, at the consumer level. But it is, again, it's a, it's a, it's a standard, it is one that's being adopted, and it doesn't apply to outdoor waters, it's for indoor only. So fifty-five GPCB is really one, again, used as a benchmark by retail water agencies, not all, by some, who are subject to the requirements to establish their overall water, uh, use efficiency targets and then to see whether or not they meet those targets over certain, uh, time periods that are established by the state.
But I thought it, uh, that it's for budgeting water.
Yes, that's a different vice versa.
Yeah, and, but if you exceed that budget, uh, then you will be fined.
Not the consumer, but, but the water providers can be fined. And again, it doesn't apply universally to every water agency, the state, for instance, at our size, it does not apply to, um, to us.
Oh, okay.
Or Solvang.
The number you mentioned.
Right, okay.
The numbers are all over the place. Two point eight people in the firm, family, firm, lot, normal city sized lot, who arrive with two point eight people. At one quarter, we're starting off and give the question. Two people, but anyway, is that a real number? Another number they get battered around is seventy percent of the domestic water sales go to landscaping. Is that a real number? If that's the case, fifty-five gallons for just health and safety is a lot of water. And they're mountain six units a month. Well, six units a month is a, almost an average in Long Hope. And that, and I guess any landscape room looks like everybody else, I don't know. There's so many variables in here.
So did you get your question answered, Brad? You feel good with that?
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think that, uh, it's a lot of great...
So, so kind of sticking to the script here, uh, anything more for Sigma before we go to the next item? No? Okay, we'll go to item number eleven. It's reports that don't require any action. And certainly we have some material on our packet, but also for the board members that have attended other meetings, other than ninety-one, they'd like to report on them. Uh, we'd certainly like to hear.
And I'll be happy to, to just, I'll just break through on this stuff, but I, I think that's a good cue, um, Mr. President. So if there are any board members who want to report on meetings they attended, for example, Harlan, I, you know, I'm a board member, honestly, but I did attend the CCWA Ops Committee. Harlan, I believe you could, you attended the CCWA Board meeting, this podcast once here, Thursday, last week. Yeah, anything remarkable that you would want to report to the board?
Uh, no, there's a second that we discussed, the, the whole city council, the whole CCWA is more that often out of the, of the... The state, yeah, the project. But Ray Stokes did mention the, kind of a new wrinkle, they're, they're, they're figuring out that even though we all opt out, there may be something that we might have some extra water, whatever way you can get extra water by buying into these water banks over the valley, Urwin, uh, uh, current, uh, current valley, current county, which is definitely with, and, uh, the Baha'i, there are places to buy water, expense gets to be a variable, it gets pretty soon, you know, that one becomes a beating of water. They say Solvang wants some, Beelton wants some, and ID one wants some, Bruce, who's gonna pay the bills? That's gonna be the dictating factor. That's just the American way. But there are, there are gonna be other methods to increase your supply if you don't opt in to the tunnel or or the earthquake shakes the, the saltwater into the, into the Sacramento River, all that good stuff. They, about when they go along, they talk about the prediction of a major earthquake in the next whatever, couple of years. Well, you gotta have to, you have to go ahead and deliver your day, you can't do none of the earthquakes. There's lots of areas, there are, there are lots of areas. And, uh, none of the, none of the total pad has...
Yeah.
But it may need it, somebody knows, wants some more water. ID one, fortunately, because I think those are some good plans for the last sixty years, we're sitting here with four sources of water. People looking at you like, you're crazy, you have like four sources of water. Yes, we do. I was explaining it to the lady, she believed it, this is the other day, CCWA. Back to them, South Coast, I'm sorry, I have done a real poor job of their vast planet. They depend on this mud puddle up here called the Chuma for something like eighty-nine percent of their water. That's a hell of a big number. When you consider we've had five or six severe droughts in the last eight years, where it looked like a mud puddle a couple of times. It was down to below thirty thousand acre feet. Yeah, well, what are you gonna do? They're gonna desalate. Everybody has to get kind of, get over, giddy over it. You people in the South Coast, I'd be financing a Billy desalate plant as fast as you possibly can. And one day, somewhere down the pipe, I won't live to see it, but people on this side are not gonna be taking that to buy something from them. But not ID one, maybe, because what do we got? We have wells in the river. Four CFS and six CFS, a lot of water over, over our source of water, if you do the math. We have our Elko's well, huge, gigantic, pumped twelve hundred gallon, fourteen hundred gallon. But now we have the chromium six hangover head here, I guess. We have to choose twenty-six hundred and something acre feet a year, over half our normal use. And we have state water. We've got more water sources than we deserve. But we plant a head somewhere back, somewhere somebody planted it.
We do, and, and, uh, yeah, we should be thankful for that.
Well, and it goes, it goes beyond that. Just recently, you would hear, I'm on a roll, I'm sorry, you shouldn't have asked me.
What do you ask you?
Can I have more than three minutes?
No, I, I think, I think we were talking about the CCWA meeting, but I wasn't there, so maybe I was just...
I went down to CCWA meetings, I sat there with all the people from the South Coast.
Okay.
And I was telling the lady, she said, my next, she said, what are your four sources? And I wrote, written a, wrapped them all for her. And she was like flagrant. Montecito has visions of putting storage water over the Santa Ana Valley. Uh-uh, you know all the water you're gonna get this whole entire river. Santa Barbara says, or Belita said to Montecito, don't go here, this is our story here. If you keep your Montecito, you can stay a hell of a while back there. They're fighting among themselves all the time. At the same time, they're looking here for water, aren't they, Kevin?
Yeah.
All the time in the Santa Ana River. I don't think so. I, I hope I brought, I hope I was right, but the old guys fought before. And the new guy, uh, Keith White, they, they built Uki out from Montecito, called it to the bottom. They built your brother from Santa Barbara, oh, to the bottom. Now they want some more, they have to talk to the bottom of the Chuma. Well, you want civil war, you have to tell them, we're gonna give them another twenty or thirty thousand acre feet down this river. Whoa, that'd be a civil war you couldn't believe. I helped them, these guys. ID one's got a career in water. We need to think about that too.
It's true.
Five hundred and fifty acre feet right down here, our, our, our slatwell.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's, you gotta listen, Mark Twain, whiskey's for drinking water from frightened over it.
Hardly true.
And so far, I'm concerned, I hate to be cruel to the South Coast, but you guys screwed up and didn't plant again. Like they did over here, you're not getting any more of here.
Well, well said, Harlan.
One more thing.
Really?
The Chuma Dam, Bracker Dam was built to create a supplemental source of water, supplemental source of water for seventy thousand people.
Mm-hmm, that's right, that's right.
How many people on the South Coast now? Two hundred fifty thousand?
Two hundred.
Okay, so maybe a plan, maybe you speak to it. Yep. That's not our fault. I got one more. Four plant on your part is not a...
Crisis.
It's not my part.
Very true.
I think Harlan made a good point about diversification though, because in any given time, and we all know this, one or more of our four sources of supply is getting hammered at some time.
True.
You know, whether it's Chrome for the up and whether it's Dry Year on the state project, you know, six years of sustained drought on, in, in the Santa Barbara County region, I mean, we're, like Harlan said, seven percent at one point. And then reservoir meant nothing to us virtually, and, and having three other reliable sources of supply at a time saved us.
Absolutely.
Uh, and, and frankly, I think it's, you know, what we see from the South Coast right now in these efforts of diversification, I mean, copying someone or mimicking someone is sometimes the greatest compliment. I think they're coming to a point now where, you know, it's, it's taking them some, it has taken them some time, but because of growing demands and because of the growing of reliability of Kachuma, and they're facing more expensive alternatives in their diversification efforts. But whether it's desalate, you read the stories about Montecio, uh, looking to highly treat recycled water, recharge the basins, uh, you know, or bringing state supplies from the south or trying to, you know, wheel them through different parts of the state. Uh, but at least they're doing it, and I think that regionally, it's good for all of us. The more that the South Coast diversifies, because it does decrease tensions, uh, when, when times are dire on Kachuma. And therefore then allows better regional coordination cooperation. So perhaps also that sort of thing.
Without a doubt, without a doubt. Um, I know we have this report about, uh, the meter replacement.
Sure, Brad, do you have anything on, on your extra meetings, if you want to comment on before we turn them?
Got one in February coming up.
Okay, okay. Peter? Yeah, and I don't have to cover any or all of these in detail, but I wanted to include some materials in your board packages, again, by way of information and to keep you up to speed on some of the, I don't know, regional or bigger picture issues that occur outside of this board or outside of our office immediately. But some of them do affect us directly. I just put the letter in here, uh, that, uh, that went out in early December to all of our customers and talking to them of the system wide replacement program where we're gonna be doing literally a wholesale replacement. Uh, we're in the third, uh, route right now, or we're starting the third route of twenty-eight total. It's gonna be an eighteen month process, but if, as you met Richard, Joe, or any of them have anything to do with it, something tells me we're gonna be done before eighteen months.
Yeah, right, exactly.
You just can't slow those guys down. Uh, but we want to inform customers of a couple of things. One, it's happening system wide. Two, before it happens, on your street or in your neighborhood, the supplies that you want to board and the newness of the audience, you're gonna be informed by I R one, you're gonna get a call, you're, you're, you're gonna see the activity. There's gonna be knocks at the door before work happens, and we're, we're gonna try to do it all as usual, as efficiently as possible. Now, a meter switch out, you know, we estimate it at forty to sixty minutes, oftentimes it's less. Of course, sometimes there are complications, it's not exact science, but, uh, you know, our, our, um, crews well trained and staffed, and so we're confident it's going very well so far, the first two routes. Um, and in terms of the, the sample reading that we're able to do from these two meters, it's, it's pretty exciting. So again, to steal Jeff's term, it's, I think, a feature of coming attractions, I think, I, I...
Preview, preview of coming attractions, yes, it is.
I know, I can tell you that we'll be bringing more information to you as a board about not only the meter replacement program, but the meters themselves, these Neptune years, what they're capable of, what type of efficiencies and, uh, other benefits that will accrue to our customers and our district from, uh, implementing this replacement program. So please look forward to that.
Yes, thank you.
Uh, the second item is just again, there's this, there's this new, you've probably seen it in the news, the Water Resilience Portfolio that was issued by the governor's office and their secret public comment on that. I included the executive summary of the Water Resilience Portfolio in here, the four objectives or categories of goals and actions that are set forth in the portfolio. It's, there's a lot of buzz about the portfolio at the state level. Even flipping through at that, the local regional level, I attended this IRWMP meeting, uh, in, uh, early January, mid-January down at the Belita Recreation Facility. It was interesting just to see the people who attend, what they're talking about in terms of grant funding opportunities for the region through IRWM, the first round. for the region through IRWM, the first round of IRWM funding through Prop One. Those awards have been, um, determined, it's on, I don't know, a few pages into the PowerPoint presentation. Four projects were awarded, three point three million dollars, this is again to the County Santa Barbara Regional IRWMP. Uh, some money for administration, some money for recycled water projects, uh, within the Sanitation District. Some money for the regional supply pipeline project, the connection between, between the city of Santa Barbara and Montecito Water District. And then a FLO irrigation pump station, rehab city water base. So those are the recipients for the first round of IRWM funding. The next round is going to be teed up in about six to eight months. I could envision, uh, agencies like ID One, the Seabody Sol Bank, if not partnering, at least collaborating on trying to be at the top of the heap for some potential IRWM round two funding. Whether it's for the Seabody Sol Banks, we saw our treatment upgrades, whether it's some of the water quality, uh, who knows if, where, where Chrome Six could be by then. Uh, well, we have, uh, pilot testing for different types of water quality remediation or just improvements that we could add at ID One. Uh, so again, we'll be speaking with you more about that as round two comes up, but, uh, you didn't have a project completely teed up. And that's the thing with IRWM funding, you can't get too far out in front of it, it has to be shovel-ready, if you will. But you can't, you can't already be implementing it, if you are, you're not eligible for the funding. So you really have to time it, right, for when, uh, when the, uh, the funding, um, window a little bit, because then the application cross process starts and the evaluation process, so you really have to be teed up very carefully, so we're going to make sure to try to get in line for round two.
I want to say this, Earl, we've been Sigma, are dovetailing, did you say?
They're not dovetailing, it's
How it could be?
Good question, and, and a point I'd raise, it's not to say, Harlan, that there's not more plant funding available through, uh, either Prop One, I don't know, six and two, but there's a, the, the new bond that's coming, forty-five, I haven't read that in detail yet, I don't know how much, if any, frankly, is going to be in there for Sigma. But my understanding is there, that there's money available out there for Sigma implementation? How much of that will be prioritized to the critically overdrafted basins, and how much may be left, or will be available for meeting priority basins? It's something that I think it'll lose us all to work together on, to work with, Kevin's agency, to speak because for each, we are basin-wise, we can, you know, we already received a million dollars of, of prop funding, grant funding, uh, through the efforts coordinated through the management district for our entire basin. A third of which will be seen in the EMA. But the greater degree we can continue to band together, try to pursue those grant funding opportunities, I, I think, the better. You know, we, we need to get, stay involved and
I just, I just, I think about it, I've got to forget a lot. We used to call it ERWIP, is that wrong? But it still is, until I got there, it was like, wait a minute. Is this Sigma all over again? It could be, yeah, remember. Are we duplicating effort here?
No, no, just i- if I can try to summarize, ERWIP is, it's, it's just, the acronym is Integrated Regional Water Management Planning. And it's, it is, it's not a mandatory effort, it's not a, it's not a vehicle to comply with it, statute.
Okay.
In some substance, Harlan, ERWIP was a vehicle that was set up to enable agencies on a regional collaborative basis to seek, uh, funding up, to, to go after grant funds and low interest loan opportunities available through the different propositions that are, you know, the bonds that are, that are passed by the state or through the state. So it's just a, it's a funding vehicle, and you have to make sure that you check various boxes, that you have an updated integrated water management plan in place. Updated every year, as long as you have that in place, and it's been, being compliant by the state, which the county's regional plan has been. That it makes the region eligible for certain grant funding opportunities that are out there. So it's, again, a mechanism to try to go out there on a regional basis and obtain grant, uh, funds that can be sourced ultimately to local projects, like the ones that were, uh, awarded in, in our Interestingly, though, at this meeting, they talked about how, you know, and whether the, the, the Governor's New Water Resilience Portfolio will provide a a vehicle or a mechanism that somehow takes the place of ERWIP, and there's some uncertainty because the new bond, uh, Prop Forty-five doesn't specifically earmark funding for ERWIP, and so there are some questions starting to circulate, circulate about the future of of ERWIP in the county or statewide, but again, it's
It seems like there's always something that's going forward. Make plans for us to stay busier.
Nope.
Years ago, there was another one, the Santa Ana, the Santa Ana River Valley Water something magnet growth. Something in magnet climate, and every agency in the county from, from fishing game to somebody's kindergarten flat, you never, they'll look at the whole world, they'll eat all that. And it took, it took us about three hours to shut the whole damn thing down. I say we, it was cruel, I mean. Fred Scherling was at his peak the other day, and he had some poor old girl from fishing game in tears over the Steel Hedis with the river. We said, what a great disaster, she was literally crying, and she thought she had something to do, important to drop, and when he got done chewing, there was nothing left. It just, it was just, it was kind of crazy, it was just the groundwater magnet and hamster, something, Fred, were you there? That was about twenty years ago. That meeting, Sol Bank.
The only thing I can remember that stirred in my heart is eighty thirty thirty.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Well, it's all of that been, yeah.
The points well taken, Harlan, though, there, there are several processes that are integrated and, and overlap in some ways, and that's why I'm reporting to you, just to let you know that we're keeping an eye on, on them individually and how
Oh, I, I You're the guy.
You have to be selective in terms of where you invest.
There's always somebody in Sacramento who can keep their job, but we got to think it's not for people to do.
Sure.
It's like, we gotta make sure we spend this money, so we get some more money allocated next year.
That's true.
Tax dollars, hard work.
Oh.
So I guess just to breeze through some of the materials I have here, I included, I, I like to keep my eye out for these types of things. This happened to be a women in water conference, the third annual, uh, at Puyamaca College down in San Diego County. But to me, this type of article, this type of conference really just highlights the increasing diversity, uh, in water, in the water industry. It, it, and it's, it's not just specific obviously to women, but this was a women in water conference. The, the, the growing involvement of minorities and, and typically underrepresented class, classes in the, in the water industry is phenomenal. I think that, that diverse perspective is incredible. There's so much opportunity in our business, from what you all do at the elected level, to management, to science, to history, to engineering. Uh, it's just, it's such a great industry to be involved in, and to see it represented in diverse ways, I think is, is a testament to what we all do. It's a, it's an essential service.
Yeah.
And it's so diversified and interdisciplinary. And that interdisciplinary nature and, and need for expertise in, in a variety of fields is growing. The legal, of course, I left that out, and policy, there's, there's just so much intersection of different disciplines, and, and it's just, it's neat to see. I love to see articles like this. I was reminded when I was in Reno again, you know, time specifically to, to gender, uh, diversity in the industry. You know, the Commissioner of the US, United States Bureau of Innovation was there speaking. Brenda Urban, woman. The Director of the Department of California Department of Resources was there speaking on SIDA issues, Carla Hennep, right, woman. Uh, our State Water Resource Control Board, five members, three of them women. Um, locally here, our own board, uh, the, the, the South Coast agencies, their representation, our, our, the diversity of our workforce here at the district. It's just, uh, I don't know, it's neat to see, I'm proud that we're part of that diversity, and it's, it's just something I wanted to show you.
Thank you so much, yes.
And real quickly, I mean, we don't have to go through all of this, I did include some information about the cloud seeding program orchestrated by the county land parties. Uh, we haven't done cloud seeding for the Kachuma watershed over the last three years for obvious reasons. Starting with the, with, with the debris flow incidents and, and as much as we still need the water at the end of the last two years of drought, we weren't doing that for fear of, of precipitating any further events on the other side of the hill, or frankly, on the side either. I put some information in the packet about the Aqua's election of, of the President Vice President, Stephen Lamar from Irvine Ranch, and Pam Lotovin from the San Juan Water Board. Uh, they're the new respective President Vice President of Aqua, obviously the, the the central feature at a statewide level of water agencies. Just to give you a piece of information, I was elected this year to serve on the Legal Affairs Committee for Aqua, so
Great.
Uh, they, they have, I don't know, yeah, legal and legislative affairs. So I will be a member of that committee and have access to just different information and uh, efforts undertaken by Aqua to support different, uh, kind of legislation, or to be involved as advocates on behalf of water agencies throughout California. Uh, uh, state cases at the appellate or Supreme Court level that are reporting our agency.
And that's great, you were elected to that, how recently did that happen?
Uh, January this year.
Oh, fantastic, and when, what's the, just real quick, what's that process like? How, how were you, how was your name submitted for that?
You sent an application, it was, uh, done through this agency, through Chris. Uh, historically, our, our region, uh, hasn't been as strongly represented as some of the other regions, and the, uh, the Chair of the, of the committee reached out and urged us to get more involved, and so Dan Henske, who's with the City Attorney's Office for the City of Santa Barbara and I were both, uh, elected to be, I mean, committees here. So it's a process, and congratulations.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to bring back to your attention, of course, we always have in here the Family Farm Alliance Newsletter. Uh, we, we did receive that in Pacific for the Reno Convention. Uh, some updates from Family Farm Alliance, from their Executive Director, Dan Kettle, about, uh, new things affecting waters in the state and some view. There's new legislation being proposed at the House level for endangered species protection, it's creating the salmon conservation areas. Which apparently through some congressional testimony, we learned that, and I was invited to provide some, uh, testimony to Congress, but, I mean, it was right before mid-Pacific. And there was still some ambiguity as to whether salmon could steal that, I mean, whether now that it does, and so this, this, uh, bill at the House level is getting more and more attention from Aqua, they submitted it out to Congress later. Family Farm Alliance is, Family Farm Alliance is also submitting a copy letter, which is almost done. Uh, and they're going to share with us as it goes out, but, uh, so many, many perfect things continue to be brought to our attention through the Family Farm Alliance, so I wanted to put the newsletter in here as well, so again, sorry for all the information in there, but
That's good.
Wanted to bring to your attention, and if you have any questions, I'll, I'll take that answer.
Any other questions? I love the one here on monthly briefings, uh, Family Farm Alliance associated with Colorado River, River Compact. The bridge are, are dense in there, sorry, that goes with the
Excellent, so that's all I have on, on item eleven. Do you, uh, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns? Okay. I'm sorry. One is, first, I do, I sort of figured, here's one more item, it came again after the board package was published. I have a letter received from the CSBA Department, Special Districts Association. It's a, it's a notice of a board vacancy for the CSBA board. It's a call for nominations for CB, the Coastal Network. Uh, if you have any, uh, interest in participating or being nominated for holding a seat on the CSBA Board of Directors, there's a March sixth, twenty twenty, um, deadline for receiving nominations. If you're interested in that, or you want more information, please feel free to let me know, and I can issue a copy of this.
Thank you.
This information. Thank you. And that's it.
Okay, we'll move on to item number twelve, the correspondence list. Any, uh, concerns over that or questions? Nothing?
Yeah, it is, it is a short list.
That's a good thing.
That's a good thing.
Um, okay, we'll move on to item number thirteen, requests for items to be included on the next regular meeting agenda. Do we have, do we have anything? No? All right.
So, water quality.
Yeah, we'll keep it going. So our next meeting will be on February eighteenth, two thousand twenty. Let me get my calendar up just real quick before, I should have done this before, but, okay, that. All right, um. So, I, I, I think, uh, I, I think we're finished. We're going to close session. Yeah, we're going to have a closed session, I mean, we'll take a little break, we'll, we'll take a short recess.
Okay, so, five
Four forty-six. All this plastic goes fly. Chairman of Sacramento, remember that one, that old one, that's pretty good.
That's a very good one, Harlan.
That's absolutely
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You're absolutely right, Harlan.